I haven't been very comfortable until.
Uh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, of course, I think.
You always had a physical football game this weekend?
Yeah.
No, I didn't.
It's kind of tough. I don't know, Zara. Hopefully we'll find a better quarterback. I don't know if it's just maturity or what.
No, I mean, he got thrown in there with no preparation.
He got, he got thrown feet to the fire, that's, that's for sure.
I honestly hope Skylar takes advantage of the extra year he comes back. I don't know if he wants to, but if he did, it'd be a great year to, um...
Yeah.
Give.
Take advantage of it.
Take advantage of a red shirt for Coward, too. And, you know, supposedly we got two more in the pipeline that are...
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order. Um, Larry, if you would, lay us an indication in prayer.
But the legal state of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, please. Lord, we're just ever so thankful that as citizens, we were entrusted with the ability to help our community and to make decisions on their behalf. We just pray that you would indeed give us the wisdom to make the proper decisions and to further our community and make it a safe and pleasant place to live where each of our citizens can be proud to say that they're citizens of Goddard. With our police, as well as the citizens during this time of COVID, and we just pray that you keep them all safe, where as citizens in Jesus' name. Item C, approval of the agenda.
Okay, let's take a look at the, uh, shitty rolls.
Yep. So I'll look for a motion, approve the agenda. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Oh, second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
See, approval of the agenda.
Okay, uh, we'll move into item D, citizen comments. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come up to the podium and speak for three minutes?
My name is Darlene Folsmeyer. I live at 227 West Third. I kind of got two questions. When are we going to get the reduced rates on our sewer? And number two is, are all these new houses getting built having to pay that same sixty-five dollars and something? Wow.
Those are, those are two good questions. I think the best man to answer that is Matt here. He'll, uh, give you the details.
The city's customers pay the same fees.
Okay, any idea when we might get our bill lowered?
Well, we're looking at the possibility of refinancing the debt service, which should reduce its sum, but it'll be up to the board to make the decision to do that. And we've got some preliminary numbers and we're speaking, we've got open discussions with KD, KDHE about refinancing. We were unaware until recently that financing, refinancing was a possibility, but, um, if we do refinance, we're, you know, the bills will be lower, but, you know, it'll take that much longer to retire the debt. So you'll have slightly lower, not slightly, you'll have lower bills now, but the debt service fee will stay on for longer than it is scheduled to right now.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to talk about that later in, in the month, right? Or when are we, uh...
Well, we will not, we will not receive, um, feedback from KDHE until early January, and then by the time we get everything structured, it'll be February, March before we're able to actually consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, the good news is we're taking advantage of historically all-time low interest rates.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else? No one? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting.
That's all, let's see. Um, item F, approval of the consent agenda. With the minutes from the November 12th, 2020 special meeting, the November 16th regular city council meeting, and the November 23rd special meeting. And accounts payable.
I'd like to bring up one point in the minutes that I promised Linda that we would discuss in the city community center. Maybe if we could just find a time where we could fulfill our obligation that we agreed to talk about this month.
They don't have what they need to talk about it. So I don't know why they said that last week. He doesn't have what he needs.
Larry, I spoke with a company and it takes them a while to compile their quotes. They can't do that overnight. It will, we'll get multiple quotes and they'll be good, and we'll bring it to council when we receive them.
So we can keep, keep updated online then, so people know where we're at on that?
Yeah, I, I can keep your prayers up, yes. I haven't heard anything from that, from the companies except for them coming out and looking at the facility. As soon as I receive them, I'll pass them on to the council.
Do we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes.
Item H1, Cox small cell agreement.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, you've seen a lot of me today. I have three agenda items. We're going to start the first one. This is H1 Cox franchise agreement, 5G small cell. Quick review, the City of Goddard enters into franchise agreements with telecom companies, or anybody else for that matter, who wants to provide services to citizens within the city. This particular franchise agreement is between the City of Goddard and Cox Wireless Access LLC for the purpose of granting Cox rights to build and maintain small cell infrastructure in the city right of way. This would include rights to mount 5G small cell services on streetlights, standalone poles, third-party utility poles, and other structures located within the city right of way as necessary for 5G service. All telecom companies enter into these franchise agreements, and these agreements, this one in particular, is exclusively for small cell infrastructure mounted on existing light poles, like I said, third-party utility poles, et cetera, as necessary for the placement of infrastructure and for the maintenance of the infrastructure, the 5G. This agreement would not override our existing franchise agreement with Cox or Cable. Um, this particular franchise is not the typical which you would see for the five percent for receipts. This one in particular is for a hundred and fifty dollars per attachment per year and a thousand dollars for each application for a new infrastructure pole. So for example, if they couldn't mount it, uh, in a specific location for, um, telephone pole or a light pole, they would, uh, submit an application, pay a thousand dollars, and basically install their own pole for that, for that particular purpose. This is kind of some examples I pulled from online of what it would look like. Basically, there's no way that I can say exactly what that type of infrastructure is going to look like. It's going to be as needed, basically, and there's lots of different examples of what particular types of infrastructures can be mounted to what type of pole, utility, telephone, or otherwise. But this generally gives you an example of that. I'm sure lots of you have already done some general research about what 5G is. It's basically an amplification of existing services just within a small cell area to basically amplify existing services. And this is something that it would look like. There's a small cost associated with publication for this. Legally, it was approved as to form. It is recommended that the city council both waive the reading of the ordinance and then approve the ordinance with the roll call, but I will open up the questions at this time.
Well, my concern has always been is the safety of 5G because I heard that where it's being used, there's been increased cancer rates among the citizens, quote, those holes through the microwave coming off of it, and how close in proximity these things are to each other, just frying people's insides.
Yeah, not being a health professional myself, I'm not sure if I can comment particularly on the health risks of 5G. The only thing I can really speak on specifically is that they would be installing these within the city right of way. Um, the way it's written, it's written and adopted under state law, they've basically been given the green light, and at this point, this is somewhat of a formality to, we're adopting it.
We don't really have an option, do we?
Not particularly, no. The way, like I said, the way it was written and adopted and, um, our, our city attorney, Robert Quakendall, has interpreted it, it is basically, the state is giving telecom companies, um, sort of free rein to develop within the city right of ways of every municipality within Kansas. For multiple different reasons. One of them is being competitive to try to make us more competitive versus other states for the development of smart cities and everything else that goes with it, autonomous vehicles, et cetera. There's a lot of benefits that come with 5G, especially increased bandwidth and everything else that, that can particularly be built upon those platforms. Um, but other than that, I can't really speak on the health benefits of it or the health risks of it for that matter.
Monica, Sarah. Are there any more questions?
There is a clause in there that's called the favorable municipality clause that if another municipality within the state of Kansas, it has to be within the state of Kansas, uh, has a better financial agreement or a particular agreement with 5G or Cox in this matter, we could ask for that particular, those particular additional benefits and reamend this franchise agreement. Um, but that would have to be, like I said, within the state of Kansas. It can't be, if California's getting paid, let's say, three hundred dollars for every installment, we can't say, oh, California with this city in California, or this city in New York, this city in Texas. It has to be a city in Cali, in Kansas. And then we could say, hey, we would like to invoke the favorable municipality clause and get, you know, two thousand dollars per installment instead, so.
If any questions arise, is there any way that we could have them approve the safety of it before we approve it?
Well, I think that's probably a determination that's been made at the state level. And I, I think the, the state has taken away a lot of the flexibility of the localities to make their own determinations here.
If we don't, uh, vote in favor of this, do they sue us? Or how does that work, since they have an agreement with the state?
I'm not sure exactly how that would work, whether they could bring some sort of mandamus action against the city to try and force the city to do something that it's thus far been unwilling to do. But I would assume some sort of injunctive action like that.
My concern is I hate to see a bunch of our people get sick because of it and have a recourse or no one knowing why. They're getting cancer from it.
Yeah, and I can't speak to the health hazards associated with it. I mean, I, I know that 5G has been a big, I mean, there's been a big push globally, you know, to expand it and even domestically, and, um, I really don't have any good sense one way or the other with the science of it.
Has there any been other resistance anywhere else?
Well, I think there's been resistance, but I don't know how far others have taken it.
Typically, they would be...
Right. I mean, if you think about it, I mean, 5G already exists in the community.
Right.
I mean, it's already here.
I've already got 5G.
I've got it on my cellphone.
Yeah. It's not like it's not here.
Right.
Well, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I'd, I'd like to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Okay, motion to waive the reading by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes. Then we got to do a roll call.
I'd like to motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. Uh, council members, Emmerman.
Does it have to be unanimous or does it require it?
Does it have to be unanimous or...
No, or just a simple majority?
Yeah, I believe so.
Council member Leland.
Yes.
Council member Proctor.
Yes.
Thank you, moving on.
Item H2, backflow inspection revision.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, quick background again. The City of Goddard requires citizens to inspect their backflow prevention devices once a year to stay in compliance with Kansas Department of Health and Environment regulations. These inspections must be done by an inspector who is certified with Sedge County in Wichita. The way the code is written right now requires City of Goddard to inspect to work upon completion. The city does not want to be in this position, um, as it would require additional training and compliance with minimal staff to enforce the code. Uh, this revision proposed would simply allow the city to rely on the work being done by the inspectors according to the manufacturer's standards and common practices. This is a similar provision that's been put in place by Wichita for the same reason. Uh, the revision would also remove the fee for registering, um, as an inspector for the City of Goddard, and they would also, as they are still required to be certified through Sedge County in Wichita. And this revision would also remove the fee for filing the report, but it would keep the non-compliance fee in place for those who fail to abide by the regulations. So right now, the way it stands is that we charge ten dollars for every time somebody files their backflow, and then five dollars to be registered with the city to inspect the backflow. Um, we will charge basically around two hundred dollars if someone fails to comply, if we have to comply for them. Ten dollars right now equates to about twenty-five hundred dollars a year, and the five dollars equates to about sixty dollars a year. So what I'm seeing is that a lot of inspectors, they're not used to paying that fee because Wichita doesn't require it. So when they come and pay the ten dollars, they either have to pay it upfront, or they will hand that fee off to the citizen. At which point I have to call the citizen and track them down, and they'll say, oh, sure, but of course, since it's just ten dollars, it can take a week or a month, they'll be like, oh, yeah, I'll come in anytime, anytime, anytime. And so what happens is that ten dollars, it's becomes a follow-through and a continual process just to track down ten dollars. And so at that point, it becomes somewhat cost prohibitive, and, and so what I'm saying basically is to adopt similar provisions that Wichita has, which is just file it because it has to be required by KDHE. If you're certified with MABCD through Sedge County, Wichita, we don't add any value to that by having them be registered with us either, but we still require them to be registered with MABCD. Um, and we keep in the provisions that if you fail to comply, we'll comply for you and then charge you that. So that's kind of what I'm looking at right now, and quick, that analysis kind of reiterized right here. Rewrite the backflow ordinance to remove the city's obligation for inspection, remove filing fees for inspector and filing fee for the report, but keep and alter the non-compliance fee. There's a small fee associated with publication, and it's approved as to form. Once again, you would have to read, read into the ordinance, and there'd have to be a roll call for adoption. But I will open up the questions, comments, concerns.
I think that's great. Uh, I've always felt a little weird giving them, you know, ten bucks for them to pass on to the city, just because, I mean, well, then what do they, if they didn't happen to pass that on, then, then I get a headache.
It's true. Someone's got to pay the ten dollars, and what happens is either we track down the citizen, so we'll be calling you, or we'll call whoever and say, pay us ten dollars.
I think it's great.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, look for a motion.
Our motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion to approve the ordinance.
So motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Roll call.
Uh, council member Emmerman. Council member Leland.
Yes.
Council member Proctor.
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. That's ordinance number eight six two.
Thank you very much.
Item three, designation of unfit property.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the city has conducted a preliminary investigation into a property located on the fifteen-hundred block of the Seasons subdivision, and have determined based on the investigation that property is unfit for human habitation. On October nineteenth, twenty twenty, the governing body signed a resolution for a condemnation hearing for December seventh being today. During this hearing, the governing body will decide as to what should be done to remedy the property in question. City of Goddard Code, officer being myself, found the following non-compliance of City of Goddard Code, chapter four, article seven, and listed property below the following constitutes of blinding influence under Kansas statutes annotated twelve dash seventeen fifty. Defects increasing the hazards of fire, accident, or other calamities. Sanitary facilities haven't been disconnected since January first of twenty twenty. Uncleanness, and the property owner has been allowed time to remedy these violations of the city code. I will play a short, short video, and just bear in mind. No, no sound. There's a small cost associated with publication of this, and it is approved as the form. Property owner is here, and so is MidFirst Bank. They are both, um, being represented today. We do have Grant Brazil representing the city for legal matters. At this point, I will ask the property owner to come speak briefly, after which we will allow MidFirst Bank to speak briefly. It is recommended that the city adopt the resolution for a mandated remediation of the property.
If you would.
I, I don't know what I'm supposed to say. I have done a lot of work on the house since that time. I've quit working my weekend overtime. I borrowed my retirement. I've torn out the carpet. I've cleaned up the house. I know the water apparently is shut off again. I wasn't aware of that. I haven't been home very much because my mother is very sick and dying. And I beg you, please don't kick me out of my house. I've been in my house for twenty years. This is, I, I've done so much work cleaning it up. Please don't kick me out of my house. I don't have anywhere else to go.
Thank you. At this point, you want to invite MidFirst Bank to speak on behalf of the bank, the mortgage holder.
Good evening. Uh, my role here tonight is essentially just to monitor, to see what the homeowner would like to do and what the city council was going to do with, with her statements. Right now, the loan is current and it's being occupied, although it doesn't sound like presently, um, by the homeowner, so there's only, my, my client's options are limited at this time based on those, those factors. Um, if the, the council were to evict or condemn the property, it may trigger some rights for my client to be able to come in and, and assist with whatever remediation actions are needed at this point. So if you have any questions for, as far as the mortgage holder intends to do or, or can do, if you have to answer those, that's really all I have tonight.
Guess what does the mortgage holder feel about their, their lien on the asset?
Uh, and I, I'm not aware of any recent appraisal or any kind of evaluation of property at this time, which would really, you know, dictate how much work they're willing to, or how much money they're willing to invest in the remediation efforts. Um, again, depending on what, what you all decide tonight is kind of, is going to influence what my client's next steps are.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit curious, um, about the update of work on the house that she's referencing has been done.
Yeah, at this, I haven't seen anything being done in terms of the inside yet, so we would have to follow up and see. When I stopped by briefly, you know, just did a general visual inspection through the window, through the back door and everything else, it didn't look like there'd been much done. And as you can see from the video, there is quite a bit that needs to be done. Um, and at this point, really what we would be looking for would be a signed resolution that says she has X number of days to bring it up to full compliance, after which we would be looking for an eviction, and then the bank to step in and take over for the remediation of the property.
What is that, X amount of days?
It'll be up to you guys to make that determination.
So the water, has the water been turned back on since January?
It's been off, from what I understood, it's been off since January, and it's been off for six, seven, eight, nine months. I don't know if it's been turned back on. Uh, that has not come to my attention. I would have to follow up with the utility billing.
I believe it has been reconnected, but was recently disconnected.
Again.
For nonpayment.
I don't know what you feel about, uh, timeframe. Um, I think we, we as a governing body, we all sworn off to, to have to make hard decisions and taking care of the actual safety of our citizens. And living conditions like that just don't look livable and safe for any person to live in. and safe for any person to live in. But as far as, as far as the timeframe for the homeowner to get it up and running, I don't, I don't have an opinion what you guys choose if she can get it up to livable conditions at that point.
If you decide to sign the resolution, basically you would have to answer two questions. How many days after publication does the property owner have before they need to commence their remediation? And then how many days do they have to complete the work? So two, two numbers to think about. One, do they need to begin seven days after publication, which publication would be this Thursday? So after it's been published, do they have seven days to actually start the work? And then after which would they have 30 days, two months, however long you want for the work to be completed at 100%, meaning the removal of carpet, removal of trash, mold remediation, anything else that might go with that? Pest remediation, counterclaiming sanitation, everything else, so.
I have pictures of some of the work I've done. I've put in new, I've torn out the carpet. I've put in new flooring. I have pictures of some of this stuff. I don't have a lot of pictures because I didn't know I was going to need that, but I have pictures of things that I've done to clean it up.
Do you have an estimate of how long it could take you to clean it up?
I've been doing it by myself. I've torn the carpet out and relayed the floor by myself. I mean, at this point, I've spent all my retirement. I've had to quit working my overtime. I've lost $25,000 worth of overtime this year working on the house. Just losing my retirement now. I, I don't have a lot of money to keep work, to keep replacing things in there, quite honestly, at this point. I have no resources left. I have $4 to my name right now. I can pay the water bill and get the water reconnected. I didn't even know the water was off, like I said. I haven't been home hardly at all because my mother is really sick. I can get the water reconnected on Friday. I can pay the water bill, but I, I don't have any money to do a whole lot additional. I've spent thousands of dollars on this already. And I'm trying to do all the work for myself. I don't have anybody to help me with it. I can't afford to pay anybody to do it. So I.
It's certainly within your purview to allow her, you can make your decision tonight, or you can allow her time to provide a reasonable or defense by showing the progress and allowing Micah to inspect it.
I know this is an unorthodox question, but have, have we as a, as a council reached out to any of the local churches in the community to maybe participate?
We've reached out to Pathway before for other properties, not particularly this one. The problem with COVID has made it exceedingly difficult for people to congregate for those particular reasons. Neighbors United is canceled for this year, et cetera. So it's somewhat up to, I mean, we could reach out to Pathway if they wanted, if anyone wanted to volunteer for that type of work.
This is never an easy decision to make. I think, I think it would be good for us to maybe reach out to some of the local congregations here in town to see if they would be willing to participate. I know she's on limited funds. Of course, I can make that decision. The council has to. But as of right now, those living conditions aren't, aren't safe. So.
So maybe you've been in your home for 20 years now?
It'll be 19 years now. 19 years and a month.
Do you have equity built up within the home at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be reasonable for the bank to consider allowing her to draw maybe a second mortgage? Because it sounds like she's employed and working to be able to put that into the house to remediate, to bring it back up to its proper value?
I don't think I'm in a position to address that at this point. If that's something she wants to take up with the lenders, or a different lender if she could, obviously, it would all depend on. I mean, the state of the house, how much equity is, how much they'll draw out, might be an issue. But I'd certainly encourage, get creative, certainly. But I don't, I, it's a little speculative right now for me to operate on that.
I know local contractors, they love a write-off here and there to help out, you know? One of the previous council members, Joe Torski, he's a great man, and I mean, I contact him. He might know of other contractors that would be willing to help. I don't know. You're not living, you're not living there right now.
I am living there, but I'm, I work a lot of hours. My mother's really sick right now. I come home at like midnight. I sleep for five hours, and I have to leave. So I, I didn't even know the water was off, quite honestly. I have been showering somewhere else, eating somewhere else, all this stuff. I didn't even know the water was off.
I think if we give 45 days, is my suggestion to maybe reach out to some contractors in town, the churches in town, see if they're willing to participate. If not, then I think we, as a council, would have to move forward. And.
I'd like to monitor the progress of what's being cleaned up in the 40 days, the 45 days, or whatever, as far as going in and checking to see how much is being accomplished.
Certainly, if you want to table this, and maybe after a follow-up report to see how far the remediation has come by the property owner, we could consider that. We would basically hold off on signing the resolution, and then we would follow up in 45 days after we've reached out to Pathway Church and maybe others, as well as being in contact with the property owner to see how far they've come along, basically, for the property.
We could present a follow-up at February 1st, regular meeting.
February 1st.
February 1st. Yeah. I put a timeline on it.
I think that's good. If there hasn't been, you know, satisfactory, meaningful progress, then, then I guess we can move forward with it.
So at this point, we would look for a motion to table this discussion until February 1st for follow-up report.
For a motion? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Very good. Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you know, the city has been approached by the developer to request, considering an amendment to the existing Goddard-Starbonne District Development Plan. In order for this to occur, it requires a public hearing. And so if you are conducive to that, we would set a date and time for you to formally consider that amendment. The purpose again is to consider the request by Goddard Sports LLC, to amend the project plan to include additional amenities into the project, as well as to have Kansas Department of Commerce to authorize those expenditures under the Starbonne statute. In order for you to consider this request formally, a public hearing would be conducted on Monday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM or thereabouts, to consider said request. This public hearing would be published in the Times Sentinel on December 10th, and again, the following week, on December 17th. There would be a small publication cost associated with this, and a public hearing was reviewed by City Attorney Ryan Peck, who's present here tonight, and it was authored by our blonde counsel, Kevin Callen. It's recommended the city consider setting Monday, December 21st, at 7:00 PM Central Standard Time as the date and time to conduct the public hearing to consider the First Amendment to the Goddard-Starbonne Project Plan.
Can you just be vague?
A motion and a second. To set Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM as the date and time to conduct the public hearing to consider the First Amendment to the Goddard-Starbonne Project Plan.
I'll read that motion.
Motion by Michael. Second by Larry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passes.
Item I, City Administrator's Report.
This is just an update that we've had 14 draws on the district for a total of 25.4 million, and that is the, the full amount. You'd be able to see that December 16th, here was the layout, kind of looking back south with the ball fields to the south. This would be the aquatic center. I'm sorry, this right here would be the water park portion. It was the other half, the lower roof, being the, the natatorium or aquatic center. Right here's the path for the Health Club with the childcare facility, and then the foundation for the hotel footprint. You can tell from the glare, it may be a little bit difficult to see, but you can tell that the superstructure for the Health Club is making good progress. We know that the first two floors of the hotel have been pre-manufactured and are waiting for completion of the Health Club to be brought in and continued construction there. A little better view of the framing, looking back to the south for the Health Club. And then another view looking southwest where the childcare facility will be, and it's starting to be framed now. And you can tell where the, the girders are, have been punched essentially into the concrete for placement. Arbor Creek, you can see some of the additional development down the lane, further into the center of the development with the sidewalk network. Another new to report, we have 245 lots with 28 already sold, 27 are in Phase 1, 217 are remaining lots. Cloverleaf has had significant progress. On the 16th, you can tell that it was looking really good, but now it's actually starting to look like a subdivision. And we anticipate, as you'll see in our future calendars, we anticipate presenting Phase 2 petitions here later this month or first part of January. Phase 1's had 2.2 million in special assessments with an estimated monthly payment of $141. Oak Ridge continues to grow. There's nothing really new to report here. You can tell the progress has come on the existing homes under construction from the previous week. This is December 1st, with the siding and roofs showing progress of the homes currently under construction. Rustic Creek, we anticipate presenting petitions, amended petitions, and the enabling resolutions for temporary notes for Rustic Creek within the next one to two meetings. The Goddard Galia Brahms, there's nothing new to report. However, we do anticipate construction beginning here shortly. They pulled the permit, and they have their construction and stormwater control with the silt fences in place. Nothing new to report on the R cut. The frontage road, shortly after this image was taken, the road is now open.
I drove it. It was nice and smooth. I drifted around the curve.
So, yeah, and the sidewalks should be opened and free for passage tomorrow.
Hopefully, that'll take some of the speeders out of your neighborhood, put it on there.
And then I would like to say thank you to Thatcher, as he's been with us during one of the more trying times in modern times, and he's now assuming the title of Assistant 2. He had previously been an intern that started while he was in school and is currently titled a Management Fellow, which is essentially kind of a quasi-promotion that we provide once they graduate with their Masters of Public Administration. He's originally from Burlington. He's a graduate of the University of Oklahoma. We won't hold that against him. He does bring a Journalism and Mass Communication degree with us. Prior to coming to Goddard, he served as a seasonal management intern for the City of Derby in the summer of 2018. And the position is essentially for the aspiring city manager. Traditionally, they serve two to three years before seeking the next chapter in their professional career. As an assistant, they move on to an assistant in a larger community, or as a city manager in a smaller community. Thatcher is our third management intern and will be our fifth assistant to the city administrator. Alumni from this career track, we have an assistant city manager in the Provo-Utah metro area, Salt Lake City. We have the deputy city manager in Derby. We have the city manager in Sterling. And we have the development director for the City of Andover. We also have a management intern that was here, but there wasn't a spot available to promote him, and he subsequently served for the City of Wichita and is now the city manager in Edwardsville, Kansas City suburb.
Thank you, Thatcher. This whole time, I thought she made the boss.
Not quite, not quite. I do want to thank you guys for the opportunity, and I really want to thank Brian. Not many people in the industry make an effort to bring up the young guys out of school. So I appreciate you guys for allowing that opportunity to happen, and Brian, of course, for keeping me on.
Here's to the young guys.
Here's to the young cats.
Good thing about Thatcher's, we actually like him.
Thank you, Thatcher.
Some upcoming agenda items. We have the 2021 work plan at the next council meeting. We'll have the public hearing for the Starbonne Project Plan. We'll have, I'll have Brooke kind of provide an update on where we're at at the community center that will be presented at the January 4th meeting. Then we'll have Phase 2 devastates with Rusket Creek and Cloverleaf also following during that time as well. In addition to that, as we've discussed, by that time, we're also working concurrently for the utility rate reduction and the debt service study, not only with KDHE, which holds the bulk of our, our debt, but also looking at trying to combine issuance costs so we can time all of this for bond sale and whatnot, to where we can, we can essentially drop any sort of debt refinance in here as well for February. This would be the initial authorizing resolutions and stuff that we do preliminarily with the actual issuance and closing occurring late January, early February. So we would like to ideally do it all at the same time, which would save us some upfront costs.
What's the Phase 2 devastates bonds?
That is for the, the memory care facility. They'd like to look at, well, not the memory care, I'm sorry, but around the memory care area, but expanding the housing.
Oh, really? Okay. Like the villains type?
Yes.
Okay.
So that concludes my report. There are no questions. Thank you.
Governing body comments? Larry, what do you got?
I'd like to encourage the council to continue on the way we've been ever to try to find someplace to put our future city community center. It's important to keep it downtown somewhere, viable. And that way, the people in the community would know that we mean business about fulfilling their wishes to build a community center. At least if we have the land, we can say, "We're starting on it." Or, "We're working slow, but we're starting on it." And hopefully, that would help alleviate some of the complaints that was not taken into action at all.
action at all. Times are tough, and the heart goes out to people that are struggling with house payments and food, keeping their kids in school. So I think we need to be a little sympathetic at times to those that are struggling. We'd like to see things change, but sometimes we have to, sometimes we have to lead with the heart toward the direction. Hopefully we won't be disappointed. That's all I would say. Sarah?
April, I have a question for you.
Okay.
What's going on with the coffee and the food trucks and the stuff at the library? What, I see signs, but I guess no.
Yes, he's gonna, rumor has it, I saw it on Facebook, that he'll be there Wednesday in the Rolling Greek. So they'll be serving breakfast, the Rolling Greek will serve breakfast, and then Flavors will be doing the coffee.
Okay, and they're going to be there every day?
No, they're going to be there three days a week.
Three days a week?
Probably Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Who's the coffee person?
Ryan Knoll of Coffee, Flavors, and Ice Cream. He used to be at College Station.
Okay.
Yeah, so he's going to be coming over for three days, for a short window, about six to nine, I think, really short window, with the Rolling Greek. The Rolling Greek will be serving breakfast, Ryan Knoll, the Flavors and Ice Cream will be serving coffee.
Okay. Are we good? Michael, what do you have?
Yeah, well, I appreciate Larry's comments about, you know, just trying to be empathetic. Yeah, it's tough times for a lot of families that just, you know, they have to be at home, they can't work, they have a job that, you know, they can't, they can't watch their kids and work at the same time. That's just how it goes. So, yeah, I hope we can figure something out on, you know, at least some idea of a plan for it on a community center to help some people out, but, yeah, I don't know. Hope someone else can help out with this lady for her home as well.
It's always tough, you know, never fun to make those decisions, but sometimes we've got to, for the safety of, for her and everybody else in those circumstances. I can't really say any much more than what you guys have said. I hope everybody had a, you know, good weekend, and I've got nothing else. So I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Lefty? Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.